All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for our prayer and our pledge led by Mr. Caddell.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Please guide us with integrity and wisdom as we move to push the county's business forward. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming tonight. And with that, we'll go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Brinkley.
Here.
Caddell.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Kitsch.
Here.
Lemming.
Here.
McCourt.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
All right, thank you. And next on our agenda, we have the auditor's report.
You have your usual reports of your fund and your health insurance fund if you have any questions. I've also handed out before we've received our pre-approval from the state, this is our Form 22 for education for our full settlement. So you have that.
So suddenly it's actually done now?
I've submitted it to state.
Not approved by the state.
But it's not approved, yes.
That's what you're hoping for.
Yes.
That's early, that's quick.
Well, yeah, we're like the third county that last has to submit.
Okay.
So we are really ahead of schedule.
That's good.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have approval of the minutes. And we have obviously several different budget hearings and regular sessions. So we have budget hearings August 20th and 21st and the 27th and the 28th. And then we have the regular session from September 17th, as well as the regular session from October 1st and the regular session from October 15th.
Mr. Kitsch, I'm not sure what you want to handle. I got a few items to consider corrections, I think.
Okay.
The budget hearings, I didn't have any corrections on those. I didn't want to go through all those in detail, but I didn't have any for the regular session for September 17th.
All right.
Just a minor one on that one, it's not a big deal, I don't think, but on the, we have issue number five with approval of minutes, number six, auditor's report, on the agenda there was a split block. Auditor's report was five and approval minutes was six.
Oh, yep.
And then, I almost hesitate to even say this, but I guess I'll mention it. Back on section H on the third page, you'd say Brian Cowgill was one of the people that spoke, and just a misspelling of his name, it's Cow Gill, not Cowgill. It's C-O-W-G-I-L-L, but again, no big deal there. That's all I had on the September 17 meeting. On the October 1st, we're calling it a regular session in the minutes, it's actually a special session.
Yes.
And the only thing I have is a correction after that would be back on the second page, before you get to item six, third paragraph before item six, says councilman McCourt made a motion to approve the increase in hours at EMS from 70 to 75. We also in that same motion approved increase in the appropriation for part-time drivers and ENTs from 212,710 to 226,389. It's part of the same motion, that was omitted from that. Want to make sure we covered that. That's all I had on that set. If we go to October 15th, on item H, we have a, to me it's a pretty significant change. The last paragraph on item H, says councilman McCourt made a motion to approve order number three, 2025, to adopt a local income tax rate at .2% effective 1/1/26. And we didn't approve it at .2%, that was the increase. So I would suggest we change that to say, made a motion to approve order number three, 2025, to modify the local income tax rate from 2.55% to 2.75% by adding the correctional and rehabilitation facility tax at .2%. Need to make sure we're clear. If anybody read that minutes, they just think it's .2, that's the increase.
Yeah, I have to send this to state as part of their review.
Right.
So this modification will need to be made so that I can get that to...
To the language, yeah, they wouldn't want to see that language originally, I don't think. They'd want to see that change. Do I need to repeat it for you?
I wrote down modify from 2.55% to 2.75%.
Yeah, effective 1/1/26. And by adding the correctional and rehabilitation facility tax at .2%. Then the last one on the last page, let's see. Says councilman McCourt made a motion to approve all the budgets we have gone through in public meetings, that's listed on resolution number three and the DLGF forms as presented. That covers the form three, the major funds that the DLGF requires, but also want to make sure we cover all the other funds we're approved as well that we went through. So I'm suggesting we change that to say, approve all the budgets we have gone through in public meetings, that's listed on the DLGF form, number three you could say, or DLGF form, and the listing of all funds as prepared by the county auditor. There's a list of a lot of funds we went through there, that we also approved at the same time. Okay? I think we adjourned at 8:20 that night, not 7:20. I may be wrong, but I had down 8:20 on my notes. That's why I had a correction.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt.
I guess the chair would entertain a motion for those, approval of those minutes as amended as noted by Mr. McCourt.
Sub move for approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt. Any other changes or questions regarding those minutes? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have new business, Grant County Public Defender, which, Mr. Druke, thank you.
That is, I'm here for Mr. Elliott. We've previously made a request to move some funds, and as Mr. McCourt pointed out, and I think Mr. Jarvis as well, we had done that incorrectly with the wrong funds, wrong accounts, so we're just asking to move from, as you can see, from the depositions and transcripts forwarded over to the part-time investigator secretary to get some scanning and shredding done. Legally required to keep these files for a certain number of years, but we're running out of space, and so they're scanning them in through our printer copier and keeping them in digital form, which is much better. So we're just asking for that transfer. She's doing it, she comes in really early in the morning, before her regular work hours, and does that while it's quiet in the office, and then goes back to her regular job at eight o'clock, so that's what she's doing then. Extra overtime hours.
All right, Mr. McCourt.
I move to approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt.
That's your question.
Sir.
Taken by Mr. Lemming. Any questions or further discussion? From the council, anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have Grant County Clerk, Ms. Harris.
I do want to make a correction on the agenda. I have this listed as a transfer of appropriation. When I made the agenda, I was definitely ill, and I did not completely read her request, and it's not a transfer of appropriation, nor is it an additional appropriation. It is just an informative letter to the council.
Thank you. I sent my letter explaining my request, that because of the files that we're, needed to find room for, we're needing to put shelving units back up. They were there once before, we need to put them back up to accommodate files. We have found that our desks are too large, so we're going to have to get some smaller desks. The desks that we were interested in are out of stock now, so we're starting from scratch looking for desks. But, so, I've gotten that fund about 5,800. I know we're coming close to the end of the year, but I do intend on leaving a bit of a balance there, just in case something should come up. So I'm hoping to spend no more than 4,000, but right in there, depending on what we find. So that's just kind of letting you know where I am there.
So these files hadn't previously been in that area?
They were, they're files that were moving from the attic space. And when I first came into the clerk's office, we had shelving units in the south end of the clerk's space. Now we're going to have to put them back. So we are scanning and shredding according to the retention schedule, what we're able to shred, but also what we, what we get scanned in, that will be the permanent file, so we're able to shred, but it's a slow, slow process. And so we're needing to push the shelving units back, but then the desks that we have, and we discovered today, we received our new monitors, and they are insanely large. And so the desk that we, like, we're, so we're having to rethink it all. So yeah, but I do need, need different desks because of that space won't accommodate the desk that I have and the shelving units for the files.
But you have the appropriation already available. You don't need anything extra.
Yep, no, I don't need any of your money, it's money that's already in the clerk's budget.
It's already in that account.
Correct, thank you. Now, thank you.
Let me ask, it's a supply account. Since you're buying desks, should you really be putting it into an equipment account instead of a supply account?
We can move it over to that if you'd be more comfortable with that.
Maybe it'd make more sense to put it in an equipment account, to make that purchase instead of supply, because it's a, a desk is a long-term situation, so.
Yep, yeah, so it'd be a takeout.
That's right, when I saw, I thought that, yeah, I thought you were wanting to transfer from supplies to equipment because it was equipment, but, so.
Where'd the old desk go?
Where would they go? We'd just have maintenance take them away, I guess, if, and use someplace else, if they're needed someplace else.
I would hope that they wouldn't be disposed of, because I think that we've got some empty space, which obviously needs renovation over at the old Salem Bank building, so hopefully...
They're nice desks. We put them in storage, but we're doing this because we need more storage.
Yeah, it's insane, isn't it? Yeah, but they're nice desks, they're just too large for what space we have.
Hey, let me follow up a question again. Do you have money in the equipment account to purchase these off?
No, that's why, yes.
So we probably need to transfer.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to double check before you left, there is a $5,000 balance in that account, okay.
Okay, so she does have enough appropriation there, so we don't need to do anything. I did have a little laugh on your letter, I have to point this out.
Okay, I misspelled something.
You're clerk of the Supreme Courts. Instead of Superior Court.
We're all Supreme, that's my husband.
Had a little laugh, that's all.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah.
Hey, I mean, is maintenance or commissioners aware of any of these changes, or...
Yes, they're quite aware.
Okay.
Do you have to go to them for approval on something like this, or...
No, but, but we had to, we, I touched base with, with Scott over at the sheriff's department about moving, because when, when our space was repurposed for the courts, I had big shelving units there for my big books that had to be removed, and maintenance took them someplace. So we had to touch base with them, because those we need back to put up in, in the other, in the north end of my office for marriage books. So yeah, so they are quite aware. Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
So you, basically for this, you request then, you're taking funds from the clerk's supply fund to put them in the equipment fund, or...
No, I guess I don't need to do that, so yeah.
There's no...
But I still need to let you know.
Just information, yep, okay, well, thank you.
As long as the commissioners approve, our purpose will be okay, I guess.
Sounds good.
So we're good?
Yep.
I have your blessing.
As long as you have the commissioners' blessing, we're okay.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you, always.
Next on our agenda, we have Grant County EMS.
Good evening, councilman, I'm Peyton Bennett, representing Don this evening. Supervisor for Grant County. We just have a few transfers, being $10,500 of ALS run reimbursement to our volunteer run reimbursement payment. We've had a lot more volunteer runs than ALS reimbursement, and we have some smaller appropriations after that. Do you have any questions?
So I saw some of the information Don had written behind those pages, September 22nd dated. We took care of a lot of those concerns from 26th, but we did our approvals there, so this is 25 stuff, but, so hopefully in 26, we won't be seeing that kind of a need. That'd be our hope.
Hope, yes. We have a lot of hopes for 2026.
I have moved for approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. A motion in a second, any questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have Grant County Assessor, Rhonda Wiley.
I love, which one would you like to go through first?
Whichever you prefer.
Did we get any applications for the Pita Boa?
No, we did not.
So you want to be the Pita Boa first?
Sure.
Are you guys okay with Chad Roots and Elizabeth Wright, as being the Pita Boa? They have been previously.
Yeah, I don't have any problem.
If you have no other people that have applied to be considered, then...
Didn't last year either. You don't get paid much.
It's not the pay, it's the honor, being a part of county over. Chair would entertain a motion regarding the Pita Boa appointments for the council, which would be Chad Roots and Elizabeth Wright.
Sub move.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caddell.
Just one question, is that an annual appointment, or is this for volunteers?
It's supposed to be an annual one, but they passed it, and now they're supposed to stagger, and I don't know how to get them to stagger when we have to do it annually.
Okay, right now, these are for 2026, over.
Correct, correct, correct.
Notes from the council, anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, you've got replacement of a vacancy.
Yes, our mother stayed home with the baby, we decided not to come up. I'm not entirely sure what happened, and she swore it wasn't going to be, but yes. I sent a letter, and to read the letter. We are a little bit behind, we've had three people on FMLA, and thank goodness, this is the shortest drive time that we have out of all four years, and that has helped us. But I'm hoping to be done by the state deadline of January 1st. Actually, we're supposed to be done with the date of entry by 12.
So what does 2026 look like then, when it comes to assessing or reassessment?
What, you mean, like what, where we'll be looking at, like what areas?
Something changed, you mean anything changed, yeah.
Some of the, some of the bills are changing about the personal property and about real estate. There's, they're still talking about changing, so, but this has to be one, it changed a lot, so I'm sure after the taxes come out next year, there's going to be some referring back and forth, because like right now, everything's up to the level.
You're assessing process, is that pretty much the same?
Yes.
I know the net AVs are going to be less because there are different credits and those kind of things, but your process is...
No, our process is not any different, no. No, in fact, we just had to have a new bid for the next four years of our rolling reassessment. And we just got those...
So it's just a matter of how the assessments get to the net after all the changes are applied to.
Correct, it's not changing, no other way we do it at all. We still have to see 25% of the county every year, we still have to do the annual trending on the other three sections that we don't see.
So look at sales data, and all that stuff's the same, okay.
Yes.
And one of the things you hear them complain about is assessments are out of whack, yeah, they're going way too high, so I don't know if they're going to change something with that or not, but at this point, no, so it's the same.
Any other questions, the chair would entertain a motion regarding this replacement of vacancy.
I'll move for approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCourt. All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. A motion in a second. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, we have Grant County Health Department.
Good evening, I'm going to present for Dr. White's tonight. We have, in the past, allowed employees to carry comp time that they're just not able to use from one calendar year to the next, and for a multitude of reasons, it's become a problem. And I learned from Angie that a lot of offices don't allow that, and we would like to shift our policy to no longer allow comp time to be carried over from year to year. To do that, we need to buy out the comp time that employees have at the end of this year, and then, we do strongly encourage it to be used. For some employees, it's harder than others. In public health, you don't always get to choose your hours. When you're short-staffed, you have to have the nurses that you do have make house calls. Sometimes it's hard, but we're going to strongly encourage comp time to be used better than it has been. So in order to do that, I would like to transfer $10,000 from our 1161, which is our HFI funds' salary account to our overtime account. And I will entertain any questions you have.
The comp time policy, that's part of the employee handbook, I'm assuming, right? So I mean, does it give flexibility for the offices to do it different ways? Okay.
That was my question, I was going to ask David to make sure that we were okay and in compliance to be able to make a decision like this.
I wondered that too. I don't know exactly what the policy is on that.
And you seem to think that it does give that kind of flexibility?
We've always, I mean, we've done that historically.
I was going to say, because you said, follow the same thing the auditor's office does, so.
And we, the health department, have just typically never had an overtime fund before last year.
Well, the reason that we do it is because salaries change from year to year, the time you've earned this year isn't going to be paid at next year's rate, so I put in place, we pay it at the end of the year, so it's not carried over.
And then we ran into a situation when an employee transferred from one office to another, who, I mean, the other office didn't want to absorb that comp time, so I was asked to pay it out, so, just for a lot of reasons, it's, it just would be easier if we zero-balanced everybody at the end of every year.
And it is being worked on with the new policy handbook, to be...
And I notice this is not the health fund, it's the local public health services fund, so is that the fund where those people actually are getting paid their salary, or is that...
Oh, but two, but I have checked with the state, and because they're all public health employees, it's going to use that money for anyone's overtime. Any health department employee.
Right, got you.
Do we know if there's other departments within the county doing it this way as well, other than the health department?
I do.
I, I'm saying what she formerly has done.
I don't, I can't answer that, like, with the treasurer's office, I don't believe that, I could answer that for them. I don't know, the assessor's office, do you, what?
So you mean, it's have continuity?
How do you handle it?
We don't have enough comp. If there's comp, it's very little that's left over, like, a couple days, maybe not a couple days, a couple hours.
If the policy allows it, flexibility, it could happen.
That's why I think there should be continuity in policies regardless if they have it or not, just across the board, should be standardized.
And that's one of the things that's being taken care of with the new handbook.
The new handbook that, that we've been working on is, the intent is to merge from having sick time, vacation time, comp time into PTO, so that it is more fluid, to be able to be used when needed, and that keeping these huge banks of comp time that often get paid out at the end of the year when we're already trying to make sure that we have enough money to make the budget from, you know, to the end of the year, to kind of alleviate that.
Very good.
And we do have an overtime fund now through the HFI funding for our nurses, which is where a lot of this comp time had, just had to be accumulated this year. We were short-staffed, and it was a no-choice situation.
Entire budgets, entire, tighter times, you might need to look at what, what we are doing, it's almost like use it or pay out maximum for a certain amount, I guess I'm just thinking money-wise, because it could get expensive, I'm not sure how much it's a cost if we add it all up on what we're paying out for comp time coming the end of a year.
You know, one of the concerns is, you don't let people work the additional hours unless you have to let them work those additional hours, to keep the cost, you know, we budget so many dollars for that position or that office, and if they work more hours than is planned, that means their cost is going to go higher than what we expected, so, that's part of that management piece that department heads need to deal with.
Yeah.
We have no control over emergency call-outs and patients that have to have...
They're exceptions, I'm not saying they're an exception, I'm just saying, sometimes we got to watch that, you know? If you don't have a choice, you have a choice.
I promise you, it's not abused, it's, it's had two hours.
Yeah, but don't read until, I wouldn't say you were doing that, I'm just saying, no, 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 that's something we need to watch as this management, how we're doing.
All right, we'll entertain a motion regarding this transfer of appropriation for the Grant County Health Department.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caddell.
I'll second that, Mr. McCourt.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brinkley. A motion, I'm Mr. Caddell, and I second by Mr. Brinkley, any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the agenda, we have Grant County Superior Court Three, Judge Jason McVicker, there you are, you're quick.
Good evening, Jase McVicker on behalf, here on behalf of Transcendere Court Three. The court's request is a transfer from repair and maintenance, $1,000 to off-supplies for the purpose of paying for jury envelopes and folding and stuffing envelopes for jury questionnaires. And the reason that we need to do more of it is, it's a byproduct of addressing higher level felonies, instead of 35 juror questionnaires, we need to send out 65, and so it just raises the cost, and so we don't need any additional money, we just need to move some money around so we can address juries of 12, instead of for the past 50 years, we've had juries of six, and now we're going to begin to have juries of 12. of 12.
All right. Thank you. Mr. McQuarrie, we have a second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Limmel. Motion in a second. Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One thing I might, since you're here, I don't know, maybe an update on the referee court, maybe like next month or something? Maybe just, you know, something like that. Or if it goes into January, you know, if that's better. I don't know what you got going on in December or something, so.
I'm happy to be here anytime that the council requests that I'll be here. Great. You just, you have my cell phone number. Text me and let me know anytime you want Grand Superior Court III, a referee court, on the agenda, I'll be here. And I'll bring all the information that hopefully will answer any questions that any of our council has regarding our new court.
Yeah, we might, maybe we just get an update, something like that, next, next time, and we'll just put it, put you at first on the agenda and.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be super.
So next, so next month?
Yeah.
I think I noticed in here, it's December 17.
December 17.
December 17. I'll be here.
Okay, super.
Is there anything I have to do, Angie, as far as getting on the agenda then?
I'm writing it up to.
Perfect. I'll be here next month.
All right. Super. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda is Grant County Prosecutor Scott Hunt.
Two, two items. First is a request for transfer funds from 5504 to our deferral prosecution fund, 1,2402, negative year imbalance. This is, we do this yearly. Funds are available. It's just a matter of where our salaries, payments come out of. That's why this transfer is necessary. But ask approval of that.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion regarding that request.
So with, all right, thank you, Mr. McQuarrie. With that, I guess I do want to make sure from a managing standpoint, we're okay with that amount as far as the cash.
Yes.
And that's the, that's the amount that Angie.
Yeah.
And there's a, a healthy cash balance in the 2504.
So I will make that motion then.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. McQuarrie. Second. All right. Thank you, Mr. Caddell. I have a motion to approve in a second. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My second request is fill a vacancy. I had one of my full-time deputy prosecutors step down to take another job in Fort Wayne. So I'm asking to fill his position. The plan right now is to fill that with, I have a part-time prosecutor who is currently working in the office. The plan would be to move him into the full-time position. And then I would not be seeking at this time, I'm not asking to cut that position, but I wouldn't be seeking to fill that part-time position until the council is confident in our financial ability to do that, as well as the, I guess, the, the reward or the downside of filling that position. So that is my request then, is to fill that full-time position with my part-time prosecutor and then leave that part-time prosecutor position open until it's.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding that request.
So move, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Limmel.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I, I would say that I appreciate the fact that you're understanding that we're kind of in tighter times and not requesting to fill, backfill that part-time position.
I would like to, don't get me wrong, I do understand where we are.
Yeah. And it's such a balance, because I know that, you know, you don't want to run short, because we certainly, people that are in our jail, we certainly want them to have their day in court. And we don't want to slow down that process.
All right. Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have Grant County Commissioners.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am going to absolutely lean on Ms. Angie. Oops, sorry. Angie, for her help, because I know she helped Shane create the spreadsheet that you have in front of you. I am here to request these internal transfers from the accounts listed to cover amounts spent or to be spent for the rest of the year. And I will, I will go through them all if you want to. If you have questions, you tell me.
Mr. McQuarrie, what do you think?
I think if you get further to highlight these, let us know what they are. To me, there are some substantial ones here. And, you know, I did question, do an email process with the commissioners. There are reasons for these, because they are substantial in my mind.
Yes.
Especially the ones that are not including the insurance amounts. Those are, we somewhat expect that based on what we heard in budget time, especially the vehicle insurance piece. We were aware of that.
Yes.
But the others are very sizable in my mind, at least several of them are. And I don't want us to, as I explained in my email, I did talk with Mr. Rillsworth, too, on the phone after he called in, explained that he had responded and put some answering there. But I don't want them to, I'll say, spend money that's substantially over the budget until we, as a council, are aware of what they have in mind so we can be prepared for that. I don't think we should be surprised by the large amounts we're seeing tonight. That was my big concern there. Some small things you wouldn't expect, it happens. But when we're talking $100,000 more, that's half the budget that was originally there, or double the budget that was originally there, that's a concern, I think. So I don't want them to get, feel like, even though we have appropriations available, and they're using perf and, and so perf and FICA as being the kind of the catch-all transfer category because there's excess there, I don't want them to automatically use that for something substantial without us being on board with it. So, yeah, that kind of conversation. That's, that was my concern. I think you ought to highlight what they are.
Absolutely. That'd be great.
Just top-down, moving from part-time salaries to salaries, the transfer amount of 15.6. Moving from overtime to cover supplies that we have purchased, $6,000 transfer. Moving also from overtime to cover copier printer expenses, $500. Institutions and Angie, I honestly don't know what that amount is.
Institutions, that's where we are billed for out-of-county juvenile clothing.
Okay. That one I was not aware of.
It's, it's just historically been paid from the institution account within the commissioner's budget.
So depending upon how many children are in need.
Yes.
That we house out of county. Memorial Day, those are the flags that are purchased. $300 to cover that. Contractual services, another $100,000 from Social Security. Those are items that we have signed contracts for. Vehicle insurance was an additional $220,000 transfer. Contractual services, legal and legal services, I will defer to Mr. Harker for those. I can speak to the fact that we, since 2011, our county handbook, employee handbook, has not been updated. So $13,000 of that is to update the handbook with an out-of-town attorney that specializes in employment law.
Mr. McQuarrie, I didn't get a chance to speak at the previous meeting, but I indicated to Mr. Kitson and a couple of the other members that I'm willing to come to an executive session in either January or February after we conclude here and present to this body and also the commissioners, again, an update on what the costs are, what they have been expected to be in the future. Certainly a significant departure from what has been in the budget and what's been expended in the past. And you have absolutely every right to know, and we are prepared to do this.
Well, there were some things in my conversation with Mr. Rillsworth that you pointed out that we had talked about with the commissioners at meetings prior to them doing it. You know, we had the lobbyists and we agreed contractual, but we knew the amount there, I think $50,000. We knew that one. There's another thing we mentioned, the redevelopment commission process, that instituting that and the work that's been done by our outside people working with us on that, it's $175,000. I mean, to me, we didn't talk about amounts back then. We talked about the concept of doing it, but we didn't hear that kind of amount. So I was surprised. And Shane thought that was a good deal. I mean, $175,000 is okay. But that was huge, I thought. And we didn't know about that amount, I don't think. It's possible I've forgotten, but I don't recall having heard that amount prior to that conversation. So, you know, when you have a budget for a certain amount, we planned like right now in the fall of '25, we did '26. And things changed. You know, sometimes you'll, from the time you did your budget to the time you actually do something, your plans change and that can happen. But if a change is in a manner that's going to be substantially different, we ought to make sure we're, we're with them on that, when we incur the expense. That's my concern there.
Sure. And Mr. Bookout and Mr. Grisler, who are also the attorneys as well.
Yeah, that's just, that was a huge amount, I thought. Obviously, if it pays dividends in the future, maybe it's money well spent, but you don't.
They're also working off the budget they had before, right? I mean, that wasn't the budget. Two out of three are involved in that.
But they, but they could have told us what's going to be, come to us and say, it's going to cost us much money, guys.
On the employee handbook, my question would be, are we using the same people that did it years ago?
No. No. We, we took, we did have the redlined draft that had been created in, I think, 2022, but it was never acted upon. There was an attorney that was hired. They, there was a group that got, of supervisors that got together and said, hey, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see that. They created this redline version, and then, for whatever reason, the leadership at the time never moved that forward into being, the accepted handbook. So we are still working from 2011. And the world's changed since 2011. So.
That's my question, is the world changes every 30 seconds in that HR world. Is there any continued updates included with that cost?
He, he is, that attorney is access, if we have an HR concern, we can pick up the phone and call him. He's been very, very helpful with some legal actions that we have experienced since I've been here.
I, I feel like, from the information I'm getting to my business, that there's updates annually to things. So are those things being implemented annually, or do we have a budget or a process for that to get that done annually now? And great, great on your part for getting it taken care of.
Yeah.
It's, it's huge. I mean, when you, when you have a, a document that you're working
off of, and it, it is the document. It's what you have. It's the tool you have. You know, if you're trying to dig a hole with a shovel, and that's the only shovel you have, then you use that shovel. But, you know, just one, one particular issue, social media. We don't have nothing in our handbook that talks about social media, how we handle it, what we allow, what we don't allow. That's just one small issue that we need to be able to be, have something to fall back on.
That leads to my next question is, versus a one-time payment or a revision, is there any subscription-based services out there that we can rely on for county government versus going directly to a government like that?
Perhaps. I haven't investigated that. We have, we get, we get calls all the time about upstairs for, can we come and do your payroll for you? Can we do this for you? Can we do that for you? And, and we've kind of, let us get our document first and see if we can move forward with that. And then let's look at, you know, the possibility of, I would love to move us forward into the 21st century with automatic updates and, and things, but.
I agree with you.
I feel like we're not there yet. But, you know, if we do, we want to be able to look for something that is economical, that makes sense, that fits within our county government without costing us or providing services that we don't need. You know, we would, we would look at many companies, if that were something, an avenue that we wanted to go down.
I don't know. My questions are fair for you to ask, as opposed maybe to the commissioners. And if you can't answer it completely.
I'll do my best.
I understand. I mean, just piggyback on the RDC. The, the amount is a very substantial, far beyond what I ever, ever imagined or dreamed that, that we would see. Can you speak to what that $175,000 is going to? And are we looking at any additionals down the line that's, that's going to creep up? That's, that is going to make that amount even larger?
I can't speak of down the line, bigger amounts. But if, you know, I have said myself that if this $175,000 investment for this year brings us a big fish, whatever it may be, somebody that brings us 1,000 jobs, or 500 jobs, or new homeowners, new taxpayers into the community, it would pay dividends in the future. I, I feel like maybe we might be close to that. Maybe. Hopefully. But I, you know, there are no guarantees until it's in writing, until they're here.
As, in regards to the lobbyists, are we seeing any direction, any movement that would make us feel good that that investment wasn't worth it on our part?
We're still evaluating that.
Fair enough.
I, I think actually.
It's really tough with Senate Bill 1 now. Everything is.
The RDC, in going to those meetings, Brinkley and I were on that committee, and Mr. Harker, I think there's some things that, that he's going to present on the attorney fees and some of that stuff coming forward that hopefully will answer and make this body feel really good about that $175,000 expense.
Because I think that's an ongoing type of expense. We're going to see that kind of money and expense next year as well. I, I think it's also, it was higher than I expected, I'll have to be honest. But with the job I'm seeing Marty, Harker, and Mr. Bookout do, I've been very, very impressed. And I've been around a lot of this business stuff in government for a number of years, and they've done more in the last six months than I've seen in 16 years. I'm just telling you that. They've done a lot.
We have RFPs due on the former data site on December 1. And we're making good news out of that. There are a lot of other things that we're working on. Given the nature of economic development, we are just limited what we could say in this meeting. But an executive session will be able to have a much broader discussion and get all of you up to speed on where the money's going and why. It had to be ongoing. I mean, it's, it's a little bit risk reward, right?
It is.
But it puts us in a difficult spot, too, because if it becomes risk, then we have to make a decision if we're no longer going to go down this route. And then we have to take a look at all the money that we've already expended to get there, so.
Absolutely. I, I'm a taxpayer, too. I don't want to spend money that, you know, for nothing.
Right.
You know, we, we, we hope that the seeds we plant will, will grow.
Absolutely. It'll benefit all of us.
Yes.
Is it all variable cost going forward? Is there any fixed costs that we can establish and budget for and have knowns going forward with this?
As far as.
Redevelopment commission?
We can shoot for that. We can, that's one of the things that I hope to, to do in this meeting is to then try to pin down going forward some more predictability. And this is year one, and it's really tough for us.
I like predictability.
That's a good question. I didn't ask Mr. Rillsworth in our conversation if the appropriation they requested and we approved in 2026 in this legal and contractual services, would we pay that fee? If that anticipated cost was included enough to do that? That's a good question. I don't know.
I do believe so.
Okay. I hope that's the case, but yeah. I didn't ask that question.
No, within August. But I, I do believe. But I do believe that those were, you know, especially the, the hard costs that we paid Mr. Bookout, you know, we know what that is.
Okay. I had to think to ask in that question if it was already included in '26, or if that's going to be a surprise.
I believe so.
$90,000.
We can let us know when we meet.
To continue that, the list, the additional telephone costs, I know that we assisted the IT department with some additional costs that they had spent prior to having their budget squared away. Building liability insurance, again, I think that that was just an under-budget issue. Pitney bows, I can absolutely confirm exactly what that is. I know it's this, you know, one of the smallest amounts on there, but postage went up from 69 cents to 74 cents July 13th. And the commissioners pay the postage for all the mail that goes out, and when Mr. McVicker was here earlier and he talked about sending out additional, we posted two envelopes for each juror questionnaire that went out. We went through a lot of money during that couple, two or three weeks that we were doing that. There were about 10 boxes, 12 boxes of envelopes that got posted, so that, to be just that amount short, now that we've done them all, I actually feel kind of good about that.
That might be an expense.
What's that?
That's a large expense for the number of trials that actually is conducted.
I could not believe, you know, it's my first time doing those type of mailers, and to see that many envelopes go out was just phenomenal.
Correct me if I'm wrong, was 14 the number? 14 trials out of 2024?
2024 is.
Right in that range.
12 to 15.
In the teens, I guess. David might be able to give us.
They still have to send out the papers, and then a lot of times a case will get resolved right at the last second. You've already spent all that money. I mean, they've been resolving the jury's error, so you're paying them for the day.
You've got somebody doing it, too.
I mean, it would be nice if we could send an email. And then the, the last one there is, is equipment, a $50,000 transfer.
Shane didn't mention in our conversation, part of that, the courtroom that was done, set up, you know, there's costs there that we didn't have in the budget originally, which makes sense. That was one I didn't mention at all. So there would be, that's part of that. I thought that courtroom might have been a $35,000 number, something like that.
And that concludes the list that I have.
$684,900, a lot of money.
I'll give you vehicle insurance.
Yeah.
I'll get, I'll give you building liability. Outside of that, a lot of, it's transfers.
Yes.
I think we're not asking for an additional appropriation. I do echo Mr. McWhorter's concerns coming from Social Security up there in that area, but, I mean, $100,000 extra in contractual, we have $90,000 in legal services total, 75 in telephone to help out another department, and I guess part of the equipment, I can understand because of the, the new referee position, but another $50,000 is, I mean, that puts us 684 somewhere down closer to without the insurance to half that.
Yeah. And I think it's one of those things where we have to approve, I'm going to make a motion when you're ready to approve this, but with those concerns, we need to make sure going forward, we have more communication. And I appreciate, I told Shane, I appreciate the communication they give us as far as some of the projects we're doing and so forth, but probably when it comes to these kind of things, we probably need to have a little more detailed information when they come to us, what kind of money we're talking. And before it happens in a surprise like this, we know it up front.
Might be our question now.
Understood.
Going forward, when they say they want to do something.
Right.
I appreciate you standing here on behalf of the commissioners.
Hey, you know, I got a problem, so I'm not scared. Glad to know me a long time.
So if you're ready for motion, I will move your approval with reservations.
Thank you, Mr. McWhorter. We have a second.
I'll say it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brinkel. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments from the council?
I'm just going to echo things with the transfers of additional appropriation. I probably have a much different, much different vote, so.
I'm thankful that it's there.
If we didn't have the cushion of proof and plake, and we wouldn't have, it wouldn't be an additional we didn't have.
And I, I do appreciate the fact that, that you do recognize that the current commissioners didn't do this budget, but they did take off running and tried to do as much as they could this year to get things, to not just sit on their laurels and, and try to make things better. So I do appreciate that.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. One additional thing, Shane had asked me to, asked for permission to fill the vacant maintenance position. It was vacated in, in late August. They had worked, they had five, they've now been working with four, and Shane had asked me to ask permission to fill that. We've received about 30 applications for employment. Would not be any increased to budget to payroll, that was something, we started the year with, with five, and, and would just want to refill that one.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding that replacement of that vacancy. So moved. All right. Thank you, Mr. McWhorter. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Probably the one thing I would say is that the, I feel like the maintenance staff, by having in-house, and it seems like they're doing a lot of remodel work and changing out lights and things like that, I would certainly say that they more than pay for themselves as opposed to if we had to hire outside independent contractors in order to do that work. So it's, it's kind of one where, yeah, it costs you to have a maintenance person on staff, but yet it's saving you a lot of money. We can't necessarily quantify that number, but, but I think that savings is there, so.
There are a lot of things they touched, I think, in this year, the staff has, it sounds like.
What is the salary of that position?
Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. 30 applications, that's a lot.
We get a lot of people whenever we post a job, so, and about, I would say a third are worth moving forward.
Super good odds.
Yeah. And the next item on our agenda is a fair amount of public library appointment.
This was advertised. I did not receive any.
Did not receive any? No? Okay. So basically, this would be for the approval of Marilyn Roth, and this would be for a term from January 26, January 1, 2026, to December 31, 2029. Motion regarding approval of Marilyn Roth.
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Caddell. Thank you, Mr. Limming. Any questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Oh, the only thing I'd say on the public library appointments, we've advertised them, you know, like this year as they come up. Have we had people applying other than who they have, so?
I've not received any applicants or any interest.
And I think it's kind of one of those where, when I talked to one of the individuals from over in Converse, you know, their opinion was, you know, it's, it's hard to actually get people to fill the position, and if we have somebody who's willing to fill the position, you know, they, it's almost like, it's really like the extra process that we're going through. So just a sidebar comment, food for thought. Next on the agenda is the 2026 salary ordinance adoption.
I didn't know how to present this to you guys. I have a salary ordinance book that I, that I do, and then I have the ordinance. I did not print all copies out for everybody, but if you want copies, I can make those available to you.
Okay.
How would you like this?
The ordinance should represent all the things we approved question-wise, all the salary positions, part-time and things, rates and all that.
So yeah, I assume all of them said?
Yep. That's the actual ordinance and this is the book that I do.
All right. What's the ordinance number on this?
Four.
All right. So this is the book with everybody's salaries in it. So I guess at this point, the chair would entertain a motion regarding that 2026 salary ordinance adoption. So moved. All right. Thank you, Mr. McWhorter. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Limming. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, anything from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
I might just point out this real quick, I'll be really talk about this, but '26 does have the, the extra pay in it, right?
Well, it's not reflected in the salary ordinance.
But I mean, we had to be aware of that, there's a way to do the process for budgeting and so forth.
I mean, those changes to the budget.
It's just a unique year, the pay dates that fall to '26, there's that '27 pay in there instead of '26. You have to do the calculations for it all that. Every, every 11 years that happens like this, there's a math back of number how that pops up.
Yeah, it's like that, yeah.
There were so many years that happened.
That's when we have, it was in '15, I think it was.
Maybe, but that's one good positive for 2026, but an extra portion of the paycheck.
Well, on the one hand, it's good, but on the other hand, it's bad.
It was, it's kind of one of those things where you don't expect any more money because it's a matter of how the pay dates fall, you're getting paid for a prior year to this year, and you know, those kinds of things. And as far as the elected officials, you're still getting whatever you're supposed to get for that year, you know, you're not getting more.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have old business, which I don't see anything under old business, so then we'll fall back to reports and resolutions, communications, and committee reports, basically. I don't know if anybody had anything from their respective committees. I guess the, we did have the, I don't know if you could call it the, I guess, a new jail committee or something like that, meeting, and, and there was some discussion about when they might finally get a, an actual rendering or a drawing of what they're wanting us to vote on. I, I feel like I keep getting pushed to take a vote for a project that I don't even know what the project is, and therefore I think it's inappropriate to bring anything to a vote until we would actually have a picture of something. But at the same time, I'm, I'm been kind of looking at who is in our jail and why are they there, having meetings with some different folks about that, and, and hopefully we can, you know, see, see some things that could possibly be better to, so that people could see justice in a quicker fashion. I know it's difficult, though, because so many moving parts to the criminal justice system, and it's, it's hard to keep everybody rolling on, on all cylinders. And I certainly appreciate, though, everybody's efforts each and every day, just hoping, though, that we can, we can even fine tune it a little bit better. And the referee court, I think, getting that update from Judge McVicker at the next meeting. I, I feel like there's a lot of cases going through there, and therefore there should be fewer people that would be detained in our jail as a result of that. But I'm not sure that the, that the actual number of people that are held within our jail is reflective of that. So again, there's just a lot of moving parts to that. I do believe.
No doubt this body has a lot of concerns when it comes to the project and people having housed in the jail, and I appreciate the work you've been doing to kind of research some of the, I'll say the, the content, you know, who's there and why they're there, how long they're there, those kind of things. We've been looking at that pretty closely. I appreciate that. Worthy of discussion with the members of the, you know, the different departments that contribute to that population. Just to kind of also piggyback a little bit on that meeting we had, was a meeting, what, last week?
Yeah.
A few days, some days back, yeah. I think what, I'm not sure exactly when, but I'm guessing sometime, maybe even December, they're going to bring some kind of a maximum cost number to the commissioners, it sounded like, if I'm not reading that wrong, with the plan design in place with that number, for them to vote on whether or not they want to do it pending our approval or not. So we may see something. If not, you know, I'm not, December 17th is probably too early, I'm guessing, but probably in the January meeting, we'll probably see something from that, I think, from the commissioners, I think, whether it's a yes or a no from their end. So be interesting to see how that develops, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, kind of along the topic of the jail, I, I do think, based on the roster of inmates that I had seen, we were over 300, that, that certainly concerns me. I, I really think that we need to try and keep that more to our capacity of 274, and maybe next month, bring a resolution for the council to, to vote on that. We certainly can't demand or order anybody to do that, but we have provided funds so that our inmates can be housed out of county. And, and it causes concerns for me for the safety of all of our workers within and around the jail, as well as even the inmates themselves. I think that can be an issue, as well as it being harder on our facility with that many people in there, so. It's kind of a thought. I don't know if anybody has anything else for the good of the cause? If not, the upcoming meeting, the final, I'd call it the final meeting of the year, regular meeting, would be Wednesday, December 17, 2025. And with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Limming. Do we have a second to do so?
Second.
All right. And a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Two years ago.